I'll call this meeting to order. This meeting and all other meetings is council open to public. Rappor notice been posted given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statutes so that a citizen may be aware of the time and place in an agenda this meeting. Roll call.
Shingy Appleby?
Here.
Bruce Gage?
Here.
Nick Gunderson?
Here.
Rich Litkey?
Here.
Keith Niedowski?
Here.
Johanna Edwards is...
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay, pledge allegiance led by Keith Niedowski, please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Approve the minutes of the regular council meeting from November 21st and special meeting December 6th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Citizen appearances, Mr. Zabory, you're on the floor.
Frank, would you like to step up by the chair here? That way we can get you on the record, then do it with the microphone. I don't think we're gonna put it in the back. Comfy chairs.
First of all, I want to thank you for being here again. Had quite an interesting meeting at the last meeting. We met with Jerry Muller, who is the director of the ALSS for our region around here. Several of the questions, and the biggest one, of course, was what help can you give us if we're looking at a building project down the road? We're in no hurry, but we want to make sure we get everything taken care of in a timely manner. So she met with us for probably better than an hour, and we had quite an interesting discussion. If you recall, one of the things that I've said at a previous meeting was that we sort of got hurt financially from them because they cut out this exchange program. Well, we all were surprised and sat there with our tongues sort of hanging up because she reinstated $1,000 for us, which is not the amount that we lost, and it's only for the one year, because she said, "Yeah, it was quite a shock, I realize that." But what we did find out, there is approximately $10,000 available for the ALSS system, and we ended up getting better than 75% of it, which wasn't a surprise, and that's the reason why they have made this exchange. So we had quite a discussion on what should we do, what can we do, so we don't load out that much, because that does not count on our circulation. But anything that we request from other libraries does count on our circulation, so we had quite a discussion there. Did get names from quite a few of the architects who built library systems or who remodeled library systems, and we're going to be in contact with them more for the information on what goes out to the public, what does the city of Wyegah or the area want from us as a library, what are you looking for that we're not offering. And then we also spent quite a bit of time asking, what are other libraries in the state, particularly in our area, doing? Because not all libraries are going to have the same type of background, so maybe there's a niche that we need to get into. So she's going to be doing some checking with us, or for us, and then come back and let us know just where we're at. In the meantime, we'll contact a couple of the architects, see if we can get some of that paperwork from them, so we have some kind of questionnaire that can be going out to the library patrons and see where we're standing. And basically, that's it, but I was glad to be able to say that about that $1,000. That one, like I said, got all of us by surprise, and we were just really happy that it happened.
Any questions?
Thanks Frank. Moving along, we got Kathy Peterson, I'm assuming Dustin, you're on the, you got the floor?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, I'm here to represent my mother Kathy and my father Dennis Peterson. First, I'd like to just say they are, they would really like to have been here. Unfortunately, they're in the hospital tonight over in Marshfield, over an hour and a half drive away, so they aren't here. So I'm gonna be here on behalf of them. And one of the reasons why I'm here, I'd like to thank Patrick for putting this up here, is there seemed to be a lot of background noise involved with the property of my parents' house located at 319 North Mill Street in the process of cleaning it up. A lot of the background noise is that we were no-shows, we weren't on the agenda to be here, this and that. There's been some other things with the community going on, there's been the media involved, but at no time has anybody really sat down as a council or ward representatives of 319 North Mill Street to come and see how the progress is going and things like that. So fortunate enough, we were able to sit down with Patrick and develop a plan, a schedule to present to you guys, so that we're all on the same page. We don't have this background noise making confusion between the city and us trying to resolve this matter. My parents, Dennis and Kathy, we are fully with you, the place needs to get cleaned up. I'm involved, we have contractors that are involved, we're there. We're not ignoring the letters sent to us from the building inspector, but it takes a little bit of time. The 30 days that this letter had projected us to do this is not reasonable. From my understanding is there was more than one letter, more than our letter, that was sent out. I don't like to compare my parents' property with the other letters that were sent out and the other issues you have in the community. I'm focused on my property, however, what I do ask is that you do consider that I have almost two acres of land down there. Of those other letters, I'm not sure if it's a bigger land, smaller land. We have three buildings that we would like to take down, and some of the background noise seems that we're not moving fast enough. That's the only comparison that I'd like you to make with this, and I took that in consideration with making this plan here. So, two things a little bit is, I'm asking the building inspector to give us more than the 30 days allotted on there, with that being said, for certain reasons. The most important thing is, I'm willing to work with the city, if the city is willing to work with me, to get that place cleaned up. After we're done with this, I think we will show you that we will lead by example, that is a prime real estate on a highway coming into town, and people are going to see that. And once it's cleaned up, I think that's gonna help you with those other letters that you've sent out to get this, but we need help from the city, and we need to cut down the background noise like I explained before, to make things progress. They need to be going slowly, but there's not a doubt that if you came to me and asked me what was being done, I'd be able to tell you something was being done. So, I'd like to just kind of go over the schedule a little bit. Did everybody...
Yes.
So they all have it, and then these screens that are up here too? What's on the big screen is what shows up on their screen as well.
Thank you. So, first of all, I'd like to say that we do have a raising permit on file, and we do have a contractor that we contracted with to raise the buildings. Nothing, this time of year, things are slow-going. It's cold, wind chill is down there, but there's things behind the scenes that are being done in the meantime. There was the dumpster that was removed over there, tires have been taken out of there for that, so it's slow-going, but there's stuff being done. And with the schedule, the first slide that you see there is kind of an overall timeline there of what we have, starting with an administrative hearing, which we had with Patrick here. And we developed a plan, we contacted a storage facility, the container that is there is just a rental container right now. I don't believe it's fair for the police department to stand guard on our property while we're taking our personal property out. I don't expect them to be there 24 hours, but we do need something to secure our valuables. Stuff has been getting stolen over there, people have been stopping at that property, they think everything is getting thrown away, they've been stopping the progress of our contractor from doing his job. We even had one gentleman that swore we had, I don't know if I have the date right, a 1913 rear-end part of a pickup delivery truck stored in the back garage, and he had pictures, and he wanted it. My dad's an old car collector, but we can't have those people halting up our things, let alone, we can't have our property unsecured and expect the police department to stand guard on it and waste everybody's taxpayers' money. So we need a secured facility there. So we did get that rental container there, and we put that on site with the flag time point that you have there, so that we can start moving some of that personal property out of those buildings into a locked, secure facility. It's just a rental container, it's temporary, and the contractor had advised us that he is able to start on that beginning of March timeframe he gave us. There was a bit that I kind of included in there for you towards the end.
The last page, yes, it's the last page.
So, I put that bit in there to show you that, yep, we have had contact with him, and that's what he gave us.
Everybody wanna stay on this, or look at, what can come back to?
So what I did on the, the second page of the timeline is, I just started breaking down each building, and going through the timelines, I'm not gonna go through every flag bullet point there, but it leaves, it leaves us about two to three weeks to move some property out, and another two weeks to raise the building itself, and then moves the dumpster over to the next phase, which would be the next building in sequence. So there's three buildings on the property, they're labeled Building 1, Building 2, and Building 3, and that came from the building inspector that labeled them, that had sent us the letter. So, there is some time there, there is also, what I built in is a little bit of leeway for inclement weather, injuries, that type of stuff, in case we get hung up on something. We have had an injury on site, and that kind of put us behind before winter here, so that's kind of built in there. What I also did is I included a council update, if it's relevant, towards springtime, if you'd like an update, I'd be more than willing to come down and give you an update of the progress, where it's going. And then at the end, I also gave you that 30-day notice. I'm hoping to get everything done by then, but I also leave the power up to the city council to issue that 30-day notice, to say, "Hey, you now have 30 days, you reached your deadline," and that's that. So, I put that in there, and I am totally able to work with that. And I'm hoping we're above schedule, or get this done way before what I put on here, I really do. And I think the cooperation with our contractors we have, and talking with Patrick, and hopefully the city here, that we'll get that down ahead of schedule for you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got like the, like your tree removal there, starting in April, you know, cutting down trees down in April, like now's the time to get in there when things are froze?
Yes, sir.
You know, it's gonna start thawing out then, and it's gonna, it's like a mucky mess back there.
They actually called us back. They are coming within the next few weeks to get down there. This was, this was turned in before they had returned our phone calls, but you will be seeing some action with Midwest Trees, doing some tree work along the northwest shoreline, clearing that up and getting the brush. There's one tree, I think, that fell on the roof over there, and removing that as well, so that our contractor to raise the building has more access to that. So, they will be there, yes.
Dustin, just for myself, I want to clear some things up. Myself, and I know a couple of the members here, have got comments that we're picking on the Peterson family. I just want you to know that's absolutely not true. We, a couple months ago, this council decided it's time a lot of places in town got cleaned up. We had several that were in need of repair, whole variety of junk cars, whatever, snowmobiles, and we sent out in excess of 70 letters, and they all got 30 days. We're not picking on Dennis Peterson's property, everybody got 30 days. Some are working on it very hard, some are ignoring it, and they will be getting citations. There is another full-blown home on a side street here that's got, they've got orders to tear it down, and they're actively getting a contractor to clean it up, tear it down, get rid of it. So I guess I just want to make that very clear. We're, we're not picking on the Peterson family, none of us are, we have no intention of doing that, but we do have to have it cleaned up. And I guess glad to see you got a schedule here like that, and I'll ask for a motion later to approve that, and if it's approved, we will hold you to the schedule.
Yes.
Is that good with you?
Yes.
You got any more questions on that, or?
No, I, I would just like to say, within closing here, that, you know, things, things are a little tough with my dad.
Well, we all understand that.
Just in, with that schedule there, every three weeks he goes in for chemo treatment.
Yep.
So that means every third week is one less week that he is not feeling good to get it done. I will reiterate before, I hope to get this cleaned up before the 30-day deadline that's on there, but that every third week, cancer doesn't stop for anybody.
Oh, that, we understand that.
With, with the closing, and I'm not saying this just because it's my dad, my dad gave a lot of work to the city of Wyegah. He, he ran the coal and ice business down there, he went to the fuel place, he owned the gas station here on the corner, and he owned the George Gerald Opera House, and with, with your comments being said, Mr. Mayor, is, I don't think Dennis is really shutting down the city of Wyegah either. He gave his whole life to the city, and he's a pretty good community, uh, community person by having all those businesses that support it. So, I just ask in closing, that with the medical condition that he has going on, and the weather and everything else, that I take that in consideration, and we're gonna work with you, and we'll get it cleaned up.
Good, we appreciate that. I guess one of the comments that I myself made, and I just want to clear it up, is this month, six weeks more ago, your mother had another inspector here that was telling us how he was gonna put up a building and do this and do that, and my comment, and I believe we'll stick with that, is nothing will be built until it is cleaned up. I mean, it has to be cleaned up before there'll be any type of building permits issued. I think we both understand that, why it's gotta be, and I appreciate you coming here, would like to, got a schedule? Anybody got any comments? Anybody else got anything?
I was, I was impressed by the schedule when I saw it, that made me, you know, excited, the fact that there's a good plan in place, it looked like you took a lot of time to think about it and make sure it's feasible, and, you know, with that, I think it's something that makes it much more acceptable than, than just kind of going into it blind, which is kind of where we were at until we got to see this, so appreciate it, thank you.
And I invite our ward representatives, you know, as months go by, if our ward representatives wanna touch base with my parents or myself to check on that, so they can keep you updated, Mr. Mayor, I invite them to come on over.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dustin. I want to thank, I want to thank you for coming in, I mean, this isn't easy, I mean, we understand that. It's a lot of property cleaned up, and it's not gonna happen overnight, all right, so...
Yeah, the big thing, we, we have a lot of people coming in there halting progress.
Right.
And, you know, my dad had a lot of stuff, but we gotta keep things moving, we understand that, so.
Thanks, appreciate it.
You want a motion on that?
We'll get the next item, we'll take it.
Thanks Dustin, appreciate it. And number six is, discussion on possible action on a schedule submitted by the Peterson family.
Just make a quick note, so I do appreciate the fact that it seems as though this has been received very well. Now, I don't think it's in the ordinary or normal for us to have code enforcement brought up on a case-by-case basis, but I think in this situation, I'm happy to see a schedule like this, I'm happy that the city council can review it, and on the record, take action on it too, because I think there is a lot of conversation in town about whether it's fast enough, whether it's being done well enough, and I think the city's expectations, being put on the record, having your blessing on this schedule, I think is very important. And I will say that with this schedule, after meeting with Dustin and Kathy, this is more than I expected to receive, and this is pretty in-depth, so I appreciate that. One note I will make is, when he talks about a 30-day deadline, they're already planning that if they get to that point, that 30-day deadline is the city sending out a 30-day order that says finish, or we'll come and finish it for you. So, they're already planning on that, and I think that's a pretty important clarification that they understand that, and I think this is very good, I'd recommend that you approve it for sure, and I think that's all I've got, other than to thank Dustin for being here and for putting this together.
So really, what you want is a motion to accept the timeline, correct?
Yes.
We're checking it, well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the timeline from the Petersons on the property at 319 North Mill Street.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded to approve this program, this timeline. Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good, thank you very much.
Dustin, we really appreciate you coming, thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Committee reports, Public Works, Bruce Gage.
Hey, a motion to approve the Ellers sewer rate, option B, pursue the deference of the 2.5% fixed rate increase for January 1st, 2017.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. She's moving the screen.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve the Ellers sewer rate option. Got questions on it?
Just a quick note, so Ellers had two options at the Public Works Committee, option B, I think is more realistic, that we pursue a defeasance. The debt defeasance is, what it is, is we get the $1.4 million required to, or $1.3, I'm sorry, to pay off our existing debt, but we can't pay it off early, so what we would do is set it up in escrow, and then the escrow would pay it out, and what that's going to do is, it's going to lower our coverage rate for the Clean Water Fund loan, for our permanent financing of the treatment plant. That debt, if we don't do this, would require that we earn 25% more in revenue above our expenses in operating. If you defees, it's not a 25% income number, it's a 10%, and so you can help keep rates down, and on top of that, this option B then would hold for a 2.5% fixed fee increase. And what that is, is this highlighted yellow section, what it looks like is it's about 65 cents per home, per month. Not doing this defeasance, the option A, was something like a 36% increase, so when I say that it's more realistic to go with option B, I think that's maybe an understatement.
Yeah.
So, what you're doing here is approving the option B, is presented by Ellers, it has a 2.5% rate increase, it requires you to do a defeasance, so what you're really acting on is the rates here, and then we have another item, which is the next item, which is actually a resolution that authorizes the setup of an escrow to perform the defeasance, so that'll be the next item, but this is really geared towards the rates.
Okay.
Okay, this next, we don't have to have a motion for that?
First we had, we had a motion.
We got one on the first one.
We're jumping out here.
Everybody understand it, huh? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, now, this one here, do we have to have a motion for that?
Yep.
Yeah, so this resolution is derived from that action, so this wasn't necessarily recommended at committee, but it's a resolution that pursues the defeasance then?
Okay.
Is that your resolution 591?
Make motion considered a resolution for 591, resolution authorizing the transfer of the fund establishment of an escrow account with respect to the defeasance, tactical sewage system, revenue refund bonds, series 2013A dated March 13th, 2013.
I'll second. All right, that's what John explained to us here, the fancy word, defeasance.
Defeesance, yeah, yep. This will authorize the escrow account, so then when we raise that, those funds, then we would deposit them into this account to pay off our, our existing debt.
Everybody understand it? Motion made, seconded?
Yep. All in favor, roll call.
Appleby? Aye. Niedowski?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Litkey?
Aye.
Motion carry with five ayes.
Motion for approval of wastewater treatment plan certified survey map.
I'll second it. Okay, everybody understand that one? That's the one we had so much trouble getting because of all the different easements on it, it's all finally taken care of. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion for approval of extended consultant agreement with Cedar Corp. through June 2017.
I'll second that. Okay, that's what Thad explained to us last meeting, last Public Works meeting?
Yep, just a note, the one reason why it's through June of 2017 is because we want to review the engineers and make sure we stick with the three-year review and bids and all that good stuff, so that's what we're looking to do there, that's why it's only for half the year.
Right. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion for approval of the corporal cathodic protection service proposal for the water towers.
Glad you got to say that.
Good job.
You got her out. I'll second that, too.
That was a pretty big word. Motion made and seconded, the contract with the care of the water towers. I'll skip the word. Any questions?
The only note is that it's $1,700, so it's between the two towers, $1,700 for maintenance for the year, for next year on those two towers.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thanks Bruce. Fitness Committee, Keith.
All right, first I'll make a motion to renew the $800 contribution to Fire on Ice.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's pretty much an annual thing. Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Next, make a motion to contribute $487.50 to the Wyegah Lake restoration to become a third party in an upcoming grant application.
I'll second that.
And to kind of explain that, they came and talked to us, gave us some pretty good details, but by us becoming a third-party partner with them, basically, it allows them to have a much better chance at getting the grant, and if they're able to get one other third-party, it almost assures them to get the grant, so we felt it was reasonable to, a reasonable amount to ask for, for our participation.
And that, that dollar amount is not $500, because it's, it's exactly 10% of the amount that they're looking for, they have to come up with, with their grant for 2017.
Everybody understand it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Number three, we're gonna hold until next month. Number three, we're gonna hold until next month.
Yeah, we'll hold on that, it's a claim that was submitted for towing of a vehicle at the county fair, our insurance company is working with the claimant right now, they'll probably recommend that we deny the claim, but what they'll do is, they'll send us a formal letter to approve. It was turned in, I think, November ninth, we have a hundred twenty days to act on it, so it's not too early, too late, it's, just hold it a month, I think that'll be appropriate.
I guess, don't they really think that should go to the fair board rather than to the city?
Well, they, they're, they filed a claim with the city, so the relevance or the appropriateness of the claim is being reviewed right now, but, there's, there's a little bit of a conversation going on, I won't go too deep into it, but, our police department works the fair.
Yep.
But they're contracted also to work at the fair, so they're, in essence, like, our contractors are in arm of the city, so, whether it's the fair requesting it to be towed, or the police department, this is the manner they took, was to file a claim with the city.
It was on city property, the car was, right?
It was on the county's parking lot, so it was on the county's.
It was on the county's parking lot?
Right. So, the, essentially it was triple parked, it was requested to be removed, and the claim is that they wanna get reimbursed.
That's why I think it should go to the fair board, they requested it, you know.
We have jurisdiction over the parking lot, so that's why it came to us.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and because they're filing the claim to us, we have to respond, and we will, it's just, it's just a matter of, probably formality, but we should probably wait until they recommend we deny it next month.
Yeah, go ahead Keith.
Alright, next to make a motion to approve checks three-two-seven-two-three through three-two-seven-five-six, an amount of seventy-one thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and twelve cents, and the monthly financials.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Uh, Lickie?
Here, uh, yes.
Gage?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Nedowski?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Motion carried with all ayes.
Thank you.
Hell yeah. Right here.
Alright, now, moving right along, we got City, Police, and Fire, Bruce, who's?
No action for counsel.
Public Health, uh, Shani.
No action for counsel.
Rec Committee, Nick.
No action for counsel tonight.
Public Property and Purchasing, Rich.
No action for counsel.
Financing Commission, no action for the counsel, we're gonna.
Can I make one comment real fast, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
You go back to C, reverse the first two names, Edwards is the chairman of, of Police and Fire.
Okay. Noted.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, consider permit, application for Waigah Area Chamber Parade on December third, which.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the permit to Waigah Area Christmas Parade on December third.
Okay. Any second for it?
Let me tell you why I want to deny it, it was not turned in in time, right, this is not the first time they've had a parade, this is not the first time they've turned it in late, was turned in, what, two days before the last meeting?
Uh, two days before the event.
For, for the event?
Yeah.
Right, so, essentially, that parade was held illegally, alright, it's after the fact anyway, I wanna deny the permit, because I don't wanna send a message across that if, whether it be the school, the chamber, Fire and Ice, anybody that wants to hold anything, these permits had to be turned in in advance, before the event, you cannot come two days before and think you're gonna turn paperwork in, alright, obviously denying it's not gonna stop a parade that's already happened, right, but I want it on record that for the last four years, we have had a history of people doing things first and asking for permission second, we have signs on buildings, signs in front of buildings, parades, we have other things going on, and it's time that we stop letting people do this. So I wanna deny it.
Okay.
How much is the fee?
Twenty-five bucks. Doesn't matter, it won't be charged anyway, I'm denying the whole permit.
Well, I agree, I'll second it.
Alright, motion made and seconded to deny the parade permit, any questions?
I guess, I don't.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both?
Nay.
Motion carried. Alright, next one.
Well, just to specify, the only reason why I say nay is, I don't know who benefits from that, the, I guess what I was thinking when I saw this on the agenda was to, you know, put it out there to those, those people that got the permits in late, let them know that, hey, you know, basically, first, lay the groundwork, say it's not gonna happen, and if we wanted to, we could look at an ordinance or something like that.
We have an ordinance, what you're saying is.
No, but what I'm saying is, you could then put different fees across things that are done without the proper time or proper person, things like that.
Correct, and that's why I wanted to deny it, because we need to let people know that we have, otherwise you might as well just take the whole ordinance book and throw it out the window.
I disagree with that.
It doesn't matter.
It's time to start.
Okay, any more comments?
Sit down, have to talk to them, tell them, hey.
Well, I think it's just common sense, because horse and buggy days gets theirs in, the school does theirs on a timely manner, you know, it's just, you know, on their half, they need to get their stuff together and get things done right, and not just expect it to be handed, so, I agree, deny it, even though it happened already and there's no going back on it, but at least it's on record that we weren't happy about them just going ahead and bringing this in two days before the event was actually happening, or the fact that they didn't have a Santa Claus up until that day either, so.
Well, we got different chamber person.
One person, the rest of the chambers did the same, they've all been there, it's nothing new for them, it's just laziness.
Okay, moving on, Consider apparatus license, application for Jack Bishop for the corner bar, Jerry, you checked that one out?
Yup, he's doing it.
Good. Any get a motion?
I'll make a motion, give a criminal license for Jack Bishop at the corner bar.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried, thank you.
Who was the second?
Uh, Bruce. Bruce.
Thank you.
Section C, Consider Resolution five ninety-two designating the city administrator as authorized executor of the clean water fund loan application documents.
So move, I'm gonna waive the reading.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded, um, Resolution five ninety-two, any questions on it? Roll call.
Appleby?
Aye.
Nedowski?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Lickie?
Aye.
Motion carried with five ayes.
Thank you. Number nine, the mayor's report, I guess there's not really a whole lot I got to say, other than that, glad the Peterson family has represented here tonight, and it's glad that our program for cleaning things up is moving right along, and we're getting activity on it all over with the snowstorms we've had lately, I've had some fine compliments on the way our streets are plowed and sand it's salty, I know you got, Bruce takes good care of some of us, uh, but it's turned out real good, I know I was in town, first snowstorm at two in the morning, and they were cleaning streets real good, and there is a reason why we want cars off the street, all you gotta do is look at when they come through with the snowplows that they can, you know, the questions we get say, sometimes it'd be ten o'clock, or they'll, why, why aren't they plowing yet, well, they wait till midnight until cars are supposed to be off the roads, off the side streets, off Main Street, so they can do a good job. Um, I did, I have got quite a few comments, not very popular, of our lack of Christmas decorations this year, we've, basically, all we got is the banners up, yes, they're nice banners, but people wanna know, where's the lights and where's the trimming, the bridge hasn't been trimmed now for, I think, two years, is it, uh, and there was a reason, if I remember right, why we didn't put that on there again, but, I do get a lot of comments on why we don't do more Christmas decoration, and it's just, maybe next year we'll work a little harder on it. Other than that, that's all I got, administrators report, Patrick?
Just a quick note on the, the trim or the garland.
Yeah.
We had been paying, it was like fourteen hundred dollars a year.
I remember there was a reason.
Then if we didn't take it down quick enough with the snow and the weather, started to turn brown, and then we get the negative comments about it being brown, and then with it having steel inside of it, getting rid of it, it was a little bit of an issue too, but we went to the rec committee, uh, leading into last winter, and rather than spend the fourteen hundred dollars every year on that garland and then either have it turn brown or getting rid of it, we looked at, I think it was like seven hundred dollars for these banners as a one-time thing, thought was that we would start to build out based on what it looks like, so that, that would be one explanation on the garland, and that would be correct, I think it's two winters, we did not put it out or order it, um, one thing that I think was helpful was the fact that we got all the power boxes up and running, so, there are a lot of lights that are up in the chamber, and some businesses put lights up, I think that looks pretty good, uh, but, on my report, I'll just report that we did have the auditors in last week, um, they had done some preliminary field work, looking into the new financial software, so that's a good thing that we're getting that up and running. A lot of other, just regular things that we're working on, you'll see this agenda tonight, it seems like we're clipping through it pretty quick, so I won't get in the way of that, but, there is quite a bit that's getting done here tonight, I think it's a lot of important stuff, so I appreciate that a lot of this stuff is getting to the end, we'll take care of it all in one night, but it's been quite a few months on a lot of these items, so. Other than that, the only other note that I have is that the, the mayor and the three council members that are up for reelection, um, the deadline to get the nomination papers in signed is next week, Tuesday, and so just to make a note of that, anybody that didn't want to run again, the deadline was this last Friday, to turn that in, but if you're looking to run, I think it's twenty signatures for council and fifty for the mayor, so just a note on that, that it's next Tuesday, if, for whatever reason, anybody that's on would decide not to run, whatever seat they're in, that deadline would get extended another week, that's pretty much all I've got for right now.
Thank you. Moving on, Police Chief.
I'm just gonna make a comment on a couple of the cases that we've been working, obviously, you've probably heard of, a couple weeks ago, we had a couple individuals make a trip through town, do some car shopping, uh, we referred, we identified them by the end of the day, stole some significant items, a seven-thousand-dollar flea reunit, prescription drugs, rifle, a lot of change, we were able to identify the suspects by the end of that day, and referred them on seventeen misdemeanors and two felonies, that coupled with property that, I was working with Patrick on getting cleaned up, on the west side of town, they didn't care for the enforcement action, so they amped it up, and on, over the weekend, they went out and did some more car shopping, we've identified them again, courtesy of the beautiful cameras that we have outside of our building, and they have across the street on their building, and they will be getting referred tomorrow for that set of crimes, I've made phone calls, I'm acquiring why these juveniles are allowed to come back out without any sanctions, if you will, because I get a lot of phone calls saying, why are these kids out doing this again, well, that's a good question, so, I'm telling you that our staff has done a phenomenal job in identifying these people, investigating and referring it where it needs to go, but unfortunately, once it gets to where it needs to go, that's the end of it for us, but we are putting heat on them, to move it along, so we don't have this continue to happen over and over again, and that's about all I have for you.
Thank you, and that's very true, Jerry, I, lately, I have been getting a whole lot of compliments on your department and the work they've been doing, definitely appreciate it.
Well, one other thing, if I could, Dustin, can you get to doing your plan, whoever your contractor is, if they notice anybody coming onto the property from the lake, to let me know, 'cause I saw today, there was a guy walking over, probably a little closer to the dam where he shouldn't be, pulling a sled, so I watched him, he was nice fishing, but I know they go over there, just to give you a holler.
Thanks, Jerry. Set the meeting calendar for January.
Okay, as of right now, I believe we have ordinance set for January ninth, Monday, um, what time, three? And then public, or, excuse me, finance after ordinance, three-thirty-four, whenever that would be, and then Public Works at six-thirty that night, so three meetings on Monday the ninth.
Then rec and police on the tenth.
On the tenth, okay.
Probably starting with rec.
Rec first, six or six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Police to follow?
Yes.
Okay, and then, anything else, so there is, council would be then on Monday the sixteenth.
I think we should probably set a public property meeting, because all signs point to us closing on the Belltop Circle transaction, and so the process to then redistribute those lots, I think would go through public property.
The other transaction already done, too?
Yes, we did close up that, yeah, so public property, Johanna.
Rich, Rich.
Rich.
Shani.
And Shani.
So what works for you?
Well, she's, all three of you would be, I don't know if you want to tackle in between finance and ordinance, but.
I won't be here that night, so.
Okay, maybe we'll, we'll keep it posted on that one.
Are you not gonna be here?
Fair.
It's during the day, though, the longer you do it.
I know, and then Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Oh.
It's something terrible, convention.
Yeah, yeah, that's rough.
Yeah, you ain't gonna miss that, I know.
So you would be back Tuesday night, so, later in the week, possibly?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let's touch base on that, then.
Aye.
Yeah, we could do it at the same time, we're on the same.
I like to do it, it's you.
That's right.
Alright, got it?
I think that's all we probably need, yeah.
And I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five, Wisconsin statute.
Have me to read, it's pretty lengthy, I can.
I can make a rundown, if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, I'll make a motion to a closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five one E and G, Wisconsin statutes, deliberation, negotiation, purchase of public properties, where competitive bargaining reasons require the closed session to conduct, consider advice of legal counsel regarding litigation that may become involved in, reason for the closed session is considering and discuss the legal pros and cons of executing the second amendment to the settlement agreement with the Waigah States LLC, and to confer with legal counsel related to the response for petition for direct legislation, and pursuant to nineteen point eight-five-one C, Wisconsin statute consideration, employment, compensation, compensation, evaluation, data, yet, of any city employees who is subject to the jurisdiction and authority of the council, reason for the closed session to discuss health insurance, potential employee benefits, modifications, and review goals, review and goal process for police chief, city administrator, and we will convene, reconvene in open session to act upon action or items from the closed session, to act to do the pursuant to nineteen point B five-two, Wisconsin statute.
Well, you just did.
I'll second all that.
Good job, roll call.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Lickie?
Aye.
Nedowski?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Motion carried with all ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve resolution, resolution five ninety-three, authorizing, approving the second amendment, settlement agreement, and mutual release between the city of Waigah and Waigah State's LLC, and waive the reading.
I'll second. Everybody understand it, we've understood enough, roll call.
Appleby?
Aye.
Nedowski?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Lickie?
Aye.
Motion carried with all ayes.
Motion carried, number fifteen.
I'll just make an update, so, administrator's report on petition seeking direct legislation on campaign finance ordinance, we received a petition from Dimitri Martin, requesting that an ordinance be set by the city, either approved by the city council or referred for a referendum, and with that, it was an ordinance that outlawed outside contributions to people seeking office, essentially, one of the things we're working through right now is certifying that petition, to make sure it's in proper form, we had indicated We had indicated that it was not. Uh, Mr. Martin sent back a response on December ninth, trying to correct the petition, and we're waiting on a response to be sent to him. One of the things I think we're gonna do is look to meet with him on Friday, because there's a lot of communities that this has been sent to, a lot of communities that are responding to it differently, uh, but I'm confident that on our end, we're legally sound around when we respond, but to help with maybe the PR of the whole situation sitting down with us is probably gonna be a good thing. So that's the only, the update I've got, it's not being certified before your vote or anything yet, it's just an update that it's out there, okay? So I got it.
What do we decide with sixteen?
So number sixteen, then, we got an item, if necessary, on health insurance program benefit modifications for full-time employees and potential benefit modifications for part-time employees. Did discuss that in closed session, city council's hoping that we delay that to January for the finance committee. So there will be no action tonight on that.
Number seventeen, such other matters as authorized by law. I got nothing, anybody got anybody?
Just a quick thing, we had our door competition for Christmas last weekend, it was really hard getting my seniors to come up the stairs and vote, but we did, and the Meals on Wheels program took first, Historical Society took second, the chamber and the police department tied, which the police chief wanted to have a recount, and we told him if he paid for it, we would do it, and City Hall came in last, and we gave out gift certificates of twenty dollars to the Wolf River Diner, fifteen to the grocery store, and ten to the dairy bar for, um, our seniors for at least coming up the stairs and using the elevator and-
I was gonna say, there's an elevator, you didn't have to make him walk the steps.
Well, they didn't even want to do the elevator, they didn't want to do the elevator, so it took a lot of persuading and coming up and taking pictures and taking it down so that they could all vote and it'd be fair, so they all enjoyed it, so thank you, everybody.
I still can't believe the chamber beat us.
I did have one thing, uh, and it was just a question for Patrick, if we had heard anything from Harders based on our conversation during the public works meeting.
Yes, so I did talk to them, I couldn't think why I had given them a call today. Uh, there were a couple of locations that were missed, yours was one of them, and so we sent an email and I did call. They did mention that they had a response for me, they offered it to me without me asking, about, Mr. Lottebeck had asked about the bin that was delivered to him, whether he was supposed to pay for it or not. The sense there is that they're not probably going to bill him for it, but they were going to check on it and get back to me on it. So they did offer up to me that they had been working on that, and then they were looking into complaints and how often people are getting calls back, because one of the other things that he mentioned was that he hadn't been getting called back. They were gonna take a look at that, I think that was the only two things that they mentioned.
So the next time when we talk to him, can you get an answer, like, okay, I get the answer by said date type thing? That'd be the only request I'd have off that. Just so we can get it to the people that I concerned, to at least let them know what the response was and what information we have for them.
Yup.
So that way they're not hanging out there.
Sounds good.
Alright, that's all I got.
Anybody else? I'll make a motion with Jerry.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded to Jerry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fools?